Thank you for joining us for this North Metro TV candidate debate. I'm your moderator, Ben Hale. Today, I'm glad to be joined by the candidates running for Blaine City Council in Ward 2, Julie Jepson and the incumbent, Mike Burke. Thank you both for being here today, and I look forward to our debate.
Thank you.
We're going to start tonight with opening statements from both of the candidates. After that, we'll move into a question and answer segment. After we conclude those questions, the candidates will have the chance, if they choose, to ask their opponent one question, then we'll finish up with closing statements. Julie, you're in the first chair, so you'll be first with your one-minute opening statement.
Thank you. My name is Julie Jepson. I've lived in Blaine for a little over 12 years. I live here with my husband Nate. We've been married for almost 18 years. We have a 12-year-old daughter, Ellie, and an eight-year-old son, Aaron. We've made an intentional decision, my family and I, to get ourselves involved in Blaine and be part of this community through our public schools, local organizations, churches, sports, and volunteerism. And through those leadership roles that I've had with the local organizations, we've decided that getting involved and caring about this community and making it a priority is our priority. My name is Julie Jepson. I'm running for Blaine City Council.
Thank you for your opening statement. Mike, you're up next with your opening statement tonight.
My name is Mike Burke. I've married a Susan, lived in Blaine most of my adult life. I've served on multiple committees in the city. I started with the Blaine City Planning Commission. I did three terms on that. I worked through -- then I was elected to the city council. I just finished on my third term. And I've served as the liaison for Anoka County also through the city council. Also, I served as mayor pro temp a few years and filled in for the mayor when he was unable to make the meetings. And I'm running for city council as well.
Thank you for your opening statement. We're going to move in now to our question and answer segment. Mike, you'll be the first to answer our first question. Let's talk about development for our first question. Knowing that you cannot always pick and choose the development that comes your way, Blaine residents have been asking for an upscale grocery store option for quite a while now. What can you do as a member of the city council to make that a reality?
Well, the city of Blaine has a couple options. A lot of the upscale grocery stores are tied to a liquor license, and we have limited liquor licenses at this point. And on the workshops, we have discussed different options to help accommodate their needs. The way it's set up right now is the liquor licenses are set in zones, so there's a two- or three-mile radius per store, so they have that obstacle to overcome. And we've been working towards that. There's been some interest in Blaine, and I think in the future, it's in our cards. I think we'll have an opportunity for that.
Thank you for your answer. Julie, same question to you now. Knowing that you cannot always pick and choose the development that comes your way, Blaine residents have been asking for an upscale grocery option for some time now. What can you do as a member of the city council to make that a reality?
Well, I agree with Mike in that I do believe that it will become a reality down the road. I don't think either of us have a crystal ball, last time I checked, and we don't know when that will be. However, the, for example, Byerly's or Haskell's, in talking with Clark Arnison and the planning department, mentioned that the median home value needs to increase before those businesses come here. Currently, the median home value is about $75 -- home income, excuse me, is about $75,000. It needs to be in the more $90,000 range. And I think with further development, better businesses, large businesses, small businesses, different, unique businesses coming in, getting that salary base up will bring that median salary amount up, which will then make it attractive for the higher-end grocery stores.
Thank you both for your answer. After every question, I'll always offer a short rebuttal or response time. It's if you choose to use it, would anyone like it for this question?
I'd just like to ask Julie to respond to the question is, what will you do?
Oh, what will I do?
Go ahead.
My hope in becoming a city council member is to work with the zoning regulations and make sure that, like you mentioned, with the liquor licenses, that they are appropriate for the zone that is created. I also hope to make things -- make businesses more attractive to come into this town. I think it's essential for those businesses and homeowners to be a part of that decision.
Thank you for your answer to that. Let's talk about the budget when we look at the city budget. Julie, you'll be first on this question. How will you prioritize when it comes to the city budget? If you had to cut, where would you look first? If there were additional dollars available, where would you want to funnel those to first?
Thank you. I work for a nonprofit. I'm used to working with very tight budgets. I'm working to understand this community, and I have a long road ahead of me to really learn and dig deep into this budget. I'm not an expert in the Blaine city budget, but I'm learning. I've been talking with the finance director. I've been talking with the city administrator, and I'm learning the ins and outs. I think it's a priority to not necessarily cut. I think very successful cities, rather than cutting, figure out ways to make investments versus cutting. I think the city has done a very good job in keeping our taxes very low and ranked third in Anoka County. I think that strategy needs to continue, but I think it can continue without necessarily cutting programs or amenities offered to residents.
Thank you for your answer. Mike, now same question to you. How do you prioritize when it comes to the city budget? If you had to cut, where would you look first? If there was extra money, where would you want to funnel that to?
Working through the number of budgets I have, I've had the opportunity to deal with this issue. We've had a downturn in the economy a few years back, and we had to tighten our belts, so to speak, and Blaine came through it with flying colors. And we've maintained our bond rating, as well as we've been able to keep costs in line and taxes low for the citizens of Blaine. To do that, to start the process, you really have to work with the city staff to prioritize their individual departments. That's worked through the city manager, and then he'll funnel it down through his department heads, and then they'll bring back the basic cuts, if any, that were available to us. And then we'll have to make the decisions on what's needed and what's not, and that's what the city council usually does. It's about a year-long process. We also do a workshop once a year to prioritize goals that we have to set forth, so we can bring those forth at the same time.
Thank you for your answer. Would anyone like rebuttal time in that question?
I don't think so.
All right. We'll move on to talking about a public safety issue. Mike, you'll be first on this question. It's clear, both nationally and locally, that tension is high between segments of the law enforcement community and minority communities. And with the diversity in Blaine growing, how will you work to create an environment in the city to address these issues?
I've already been working on that at the city level. We've built the police department, a training center, that they can better utilize to use real-world opportunities, use the police dogs that we have in place. Also, education. We brought forth a simulator at the fire department for driving techniques and so forth to help the police be the best-trained in the country. But as far as individual areas have individual issues, we've also added two police officers at our southern location to kind of minimize some of the crime issues that we've had. And we've also just brought forth, and I was instrumental in hiring two police officers for a traffic division that we're going to start in Blaine. As far as -- we're a very diverse community, and I think education is the key to it. And working with the police and giving them all the tools they need to create a good environment for people to live in Blaine.
Thank you for your answer.
You're welcome.
Julie, same question to you now. It's clear, both nationally and locally, that tension is high between segments of the law enforcement community and minority communities. How will you work to create an environment in your city to address these issues?
I think the issue comes down to you need to get the community involved. You need a grassroots project for both the neighborhoods throughout the communities and Blaine as a whole, the bigger picture. I think the police department is a very strong public service that's provided. I think the fire department is a very strong public heroes. But we need to get our neighborhoods, and we need to get the individuals in the community to support one another just as much. We do have those two new traffic officers, and I think that's a great idea. That's a great start to help with the traffic laws. But I think we need to be our own support system as well. I think part of that, part of what I would do, is make myself absolutely available for any calls, questions, concerns. I know that I'm already getting those calls, questions, and concerns, and responding to those, and listening to those, and reacting in a positive way to really learn what those concerns are, especially with the diversity issues we're having.
Thank you for your answer. Rebuttal time, anyone?
No, I'm fine with that.
Okay. Next question, talking about growth in the city of Blaine, future growth. Julie, you'll be first on this question. Blaine is projected to grow to a city of more than 80,000 people. What important steps -- what, excuse me, what are important steps for the city council to take in managing that growth? Julie, you're first.
In managing that growth, there's quite a few things. One, we need to provide amenities for their -- for that growth, for those individuals, for their money to stay within Blaine. At this point, it seems to me, and from talking to other residents, that a lot of the money that is within Blaine now has to leave the city because the amenities just aren't there. We have to bring in the businesses, work with the businesses, large, small, and everything in between, to provide stability and a foundation and to make it sustainable with that many people. We have to get -- we have to look to our roads. Our roads, there are certain roads that we can do things with, and there are certain roads that we can't, that we have to act as liaisons with those state entities, county entities, businesses and residents, to make those improved, totally resurfaced, or totally redone.
Thank you for your answer. Mike, same question to you now. Blaine is projected to grow to a city of more than 80,000 people. What are important steps for the city council to take in managing that growth?
Well, you have to set the groundwork. We've already started to do that. The northeast corner of Blaine is probably the largest tract of undeveloped area. We brought in a new park for that area. We ran the sewer and water through that area. We've made sure that Met Council is able to meet the needs for the sewer. We've partitioned and gained access to new wells in that area, which will feed the water system through that. With that said, that will enable any growth that comes forth to be handled up in that area. And then, just to piggyback on that, we have good, sustainable jobs in Blaine. We have the expansion of Infinite Campus in that area. We have Streamworks coming in. We have Aveda. We have some good, well-paying jobs that are in Blaine, so we'd like to continue to support those companies, so they will bring in some of their employees and hire some of the people from Blaine. As far as the roads go, we've been on a long-term plan to improve on those. I've supported the overpasses over the Highway 65 corridor. I've also supported the frontage road system along 65 to mitigate some of the traffic that goes north and south during rush hour. We've also did some parking rides to accommodate the bus traffic in and out of the city. That should be fine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rebuttal time, anyone? Okay. Well, since you mentioned jobs, we'll flow into that question next, since it was up next anyways. Mike, you'll be first on this question. And Infinite Campus, as you mentioned, is completing a large expansion that will bring many high-paying jobs into the community. How can Blaine attract more businesses like Infinite Campus and the high-paying jobs that they provide? Mike, you're first.
Well, I worked on the Infinite Campus project, and that gentleman that owns that company is actually a Circle Pines -- grew up in Circle Pines, and it's really neat to see a hometown guy come in and put thousands of jobs in our community and good-paying jobs. To really accommodate that as a city, we've set forth a new EDA director, which will help bring people in. We funded the EDA, which is a division of the city to develop and promote incoming jobs and factories. We brought in some new trucking companies that have high-paying jobs. Actually, in the last 20 years, most of the major paying jobs in the city have been brought forth, and that's done by the infrastructure that we developed, that's done by the incentives that we put forth with tax income and finance districts, as well as our EDA process. So, we've already started to accommodate that, and we've set the groundwork with the, like I mentioned before, accommodate the needs with the sewer, the water, the infrastructure. We've upgraded our sewer systems with slip lining. We've been planning for this for many, many years, and so we're just going to continue to work the plan and go forward.
Thank you for your answer.
Thank you.
Julie, same question to you now. Infinite Campus is one example. They're completing a large expansion that will bring many new, high-paying jobs to the community. How can Blaine attract more businesses like Infinite Campus and the high-paying jobs that they provide?
I think the primary thing that the city council can do is to attract those businesses by working with them, by embracing them, embracing the potential and embracing the jobs that they can provide. I was talking with a resident this week, and she and her husband, residents of Blaine, wanted to bring their multimillion-dollar business to Blaine. Roadblock after roadblock after roadblock, they were just -- they threw up their hands, and they were fed up with trying to work with the city and move their business to Maple Grove. We cannot afford to allow multimillion-dollar businesses to not even get off the ground here. It's essential to work with those businesses, attract those businesses, take the land that's available, rezone those for that attraction, come up with that comprehensive, big-picture plan. Now that we are the size we are, now that we have the residents we have, what do we want to look like? We have that foundation, but how do we want to sustain that? And it's through those jobs that are going to really, really help put Blaine on the map and not just for soccer fields and an airport and a golf course.
Thank you. Rebuttal time, anyone?
No, I'm fine.
Okay. Let's next talk about the community center. Julie, you'll be first on this question. Is now the right time for a community center in the city of Blaine? And do you support the referendum that will be on the ballot this fall?
I think now is the time for a community center in Blaine. From the polls that have been taken by the task force, from the people I talked to, people want a community center. But I do feel that there has to be a comprehensive operational plan, a finance plan, to get it going. I do believe that there has to be a solid, committed partner to get the ball rolling. And I don't know if we're there quite yet. Regarding the referendum specifically, I haven't seen the question, so honestly, I can't answer if I support it or not.
Thank you for your answer. Mike, same question to you. Is now the right time for a community center in the city of Blaine? And do you support the referendum that will be on the ballot this fall?
I've always taken the position that the right time is when the citizens want the community center. It's been brought forth once before, and it has failed, and they have a dedicated group right now. I did vote to put it on the ballot. With that note, I've always taken the position from day one that the citizens have to elect to have it. I'm not going to take a position. I want the citizens to bring forth through a ballot referendum. If they want it, then I will support it, but only if it's sustainable and it's not a burden on their tax base. And there's a lot of opportunity, like Julie mentioned, that you have the opportunity for another partner that comes in and runs part of the facility. There's a lot of need for some of the services that they are promoting, and I am in favor of maintaining the senior center on that same note, in the position where they're at, and I am going to continue to support that and do the improvements we need there. It's a very dedicated community at the senior center.
Thank you. Rebuttal time, anyone?
I don't need it.
Okay. Let's talk specifically about your ward, about Ward 2. Mike, what is something that you would like to accomplish if you are re-elected for your ward?
There's a couple things. One of them is the -- I'd like to continue to work on the traffic issues that we have, and I've been putting some time into that and really dedicating a lot of my time in the last few years into that note. I also would like to see us to continue to build out some of the -- to help with the development phases that we just talked about. The Pheasant Ridge is a prime example. It's one of the former sites of the Viking Stadium. It's one of the most affordable sites for industrial, commercial, medical in the state almost with the freeway access. I'd like to see that develop out. I'd like -- we also have a 570-acre parcel of land that sits in my ward that we're working towards a similar to Spring Brook-type opportunity out there. But again, it has to be sustainable. We've been mining sideline credits to help with some of that. It's a nice amenity to the city that a lot of cities don't have that opportunity. As far as -- I've already taken a lot of steps on the west side of town with the university redevelopment area. I've worked really, really hard to have that, which is a little bit older part of our community, but it had some necessary improvements to be made, and I've worked towards that.
Thank you. Julie, same question to you. What is something that you would like to accomplish specifically for your ward if you were elected?
Right, thank you. So, as I'm outdoor knocking and learning the ins and outs of really getting at the heart and active listening and asking the right questions and hearing the answers to problems, it doesn't matter how much money a resident makes. It doesn't matter how much square footage a resident has. The message is clear across the board. People want to feel safe, and right now, they're not feeling safe. We have a lot of major roads in Ward 2. We have a lot of neighborhood roads in Ward 2 where people just don't feel safe going out their front door. And I think it has to be a priority that I do believe that it's the city council's main priority to make people feel safe, to make those people feel safe and who they represent. In order to do that, we have that Traffic Commission coming up, which I love that idea. I think it's a great idea, and I fully support it. I'm a little nervous, however, that without the physical presence of a city council member or some city council members, that it may just fade away, and I really don't want that to happen. So, I will be active if elected when that starts at the end of -- at the new term for the new council to be part of that.
Thank you for your answer. Rebuttal time, anyone?
I'd just like to add that the Traffic Commission that Julie was talking about, I helped co-sponsor that. And I think, again, I think it's an excellent opportunity for the city of Blaine to have their voice heard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you need any extra time, Julie? Okay. Let's talk about roads a little bit, but I want to specifically talk about Highway 65. With it not being on MINDOT's radar, really, it's not on the state radar, how would you work to see congestion along Highway 65 addressed in the next few years? Julie, you're first on this question.
Thank you. I know in conversations with city staff that in the next one to two years, the development of or the construction of a frontage road between Main and 93rd to about Main and 10 will be done. So, there will be a frontage road on that side, so I believe that will help a lot with some of that congestion. I think coming up with a plan to get on the radar of MINDOT. I think that's really what the city council can be the biggest presence and do the most good, is to get in front of them, to show them what our residents are saying, how our residents need the help, and why they need the help. I can't imagine sitting back and not even being on their 2020 plan, not even being on the 2030 plan for the county on fixing some of those roads and those crossroads. It has -- it's going to get worse before it even begins to get better, and something has to be done.
Thank you. Mike, same question to you. Knowing that Highway 65 isn't on MINDOT's radar right now, how would you work to see congestion along it addressed in the next few years?
Like I mentioned earlier in the debate, I've been working on this for a number of years. I've participated in the frontage road system to date what's been done. The piece of the frontage road that Julie was talking about, it's going to be a while yet. From what I've seen, we still have to purchase -- we have some easements purchased, but there's still a lot more easements to be done. Couple of things, I think it's a bigger picture, though. I think we have to get the legislature involved to help us with that. I've talked to a couple of state representatives, and that's what their recommendation is. We also -- I serve as an alternate on a group out of the Cambridge area. The traffic on 65 goes much farther than Blaine. It's generated as far up as Cambridge, and it goes all the way into the metro area, Minneapolis-St. Paul, obviously. And we need their participation as well to really accommodate this, because it's a bigger picture. It's not -- Blaine's not going to be able to solve that by themselves. We're going to have to have that type of input. We've also worked with -- we just put that new bus depot over by the Blaine Brook area there, and that's been pretty successful. And that was a test that we've approved to put in there, where they have express buses going downtown, and they park and ride there, and that's been helpful. And they mitigated some of the traffic, not -- obviously, not all of it, but it's going to be a continued problem until we get everyone involved.
Thank you for your answer. Last question from me, and this is a question that we are asking to every single person. It's the only question that every person that comes in here this year is going to hear, and it deals with unity. Mike, you'll be first on this question. Across the country, across America, we are seeing deep divisions, whether it be among -- between races, ages, religions, socioeconomic classes, or political parties. How will you work to foster a spirit of unity, both at city hall and right in your own neighborhood?
Well, Blaine is a really diverse city. I've knocked a lot of doors in this city many, many times, and I've met many, many of my constituents and neighbors. And we have a lot of things in Blaine that we help, that we have a nations get-together over at the park over there. I've been doing it a couple of times, where we've had ethnic foods from all over. We have a lot of opportunity with the police department, with the Night to Unite. We get to go out -- I've went out many times and met with -- in every neighborhood just about in Blaine now at one point or another, and got to meet everyone, and it's just really My goal as a city councilman is really to serve the people, not politics in Blaine. And that's one of the things that I really stand for. So, I don't care who it is or what the issue is. I try to step forth for the individual and help them. And that's, I think, the best way, is just to listen to people, go forward with their concerns, and work with whatever situation we're with. We have a very understanding police department. I've worked with the chief many times on that to help mitigate any issues. And the fire department's great as well. They've participated in community activities as well.
Thank you for your answer.
Thank you.
Julie, same question to you. We're seeing deep divisions between races, ages, religions, socioeconomic classes, and political parties. How will you work to foster a spirit of unity, both at city hall and in your own neighborhood?
Thank you. I work for a community homeless shelter. I work with a wide variety, a very diverse population, and I've learned over the years of working in this organization plus other nonprofits, that you have to leave your ego at the door. You have to actively listen to people and respect their concerns and understand their concerns, and have an empathy for the way their life turned out versus the way my life turned out or Mike's life turned out. We have to understand our community and, in turn, teach our community to understand each other, as with the traffic, as with the safety of our neighborhoods. We have to work as a community and build that spirit. It's not going to come from either of us who's ever elected. It has to be modeled. We have to be engaged. We have to actively listen, actively hear, and actively respond in any way we can.
Thank you for your answer, both of you. Now is the opportunity, if you so choose -- I'm sorry, there is rebuttal time on that if anyone wanted it.
I don't think so.
Didn't think so. We'll continue the spirit of unity there. Now, we'll move on to the opportunity you have to ask each other a question, if you choose. Julie, you would have the first opportunity to ask a question to Mike.
Okay. Excuse me, let me see here a second. The second time I'm The second time I met you, you told me during our conversation, "I really don't care who wins." Sitting outside as we were waiting for this debate, you said, "You know, I would really like you to win if I don't, because I know you care and I know you're a good person." Having that humility in talking to me today versus our second conversation with each other, and from what I've heard from residents that you don't return phone calls or return emails, how do you want, how do you explain to Blaine residents why you should be re-elected for a fourth term?
I think the concern here is, I want to reach out to you as an individual, and I want the best person for Blaine. If the, my history speaks for itself. I'm a dedicated, I've worked diligently for the city of Blaine. I've, I don't know where you get, I don't listen to people, but I'm not going to get into that. I've helped hundreds and hundreds of people with individual issues that they've had in the city of Blaine, and they know who they are. But I want the very best person in there. I want the people to make a decision, that vote in this election, to vote for the person that's the most competent, that can do the job, follow through, and take care of the business of this community. I love this community, that's why I do it. I told you outside, Julie, it's not about the money, it's not about fame, it's not about anything else. It's really about the people that live in Blaine and the community we live in. I've lived here most of my adult life, and it means a lot to me. When I started here, I told you, Julie, this as well, there was nothing on the east side of 65, and I've worked very, very hard to help accommodate that. So, I just want the best person to be elected in this election, and if the people want to, hopefully it's me.
Couldn't agree more, yeah.
Julie, you have a chance to respond if you so choose.
No, I couldn't agree more. You've lived here far longer than I have. You have deep roots in this community, and for the over 12 years I've lived here, I have fallen in love with this community, and I too only want the best.
Thank you.
Mike, you know, I have an opportunity to ask Julie a question, if you choose.
I don't think I will.
Okay.
I think we've had enough discussion. I've asked her questions, and I feel confident with the answers.
All right.
Thank you.
Well, we're going to move on then to closing statements, and that's how we'll finish our debate this evening. Julie, you will be up first with your closing statement, and as you get set for that, I'll let you know that you have one minute for your closing statement.
Thank you. You may recognize me from the soccer or the softball fields, or going grocery shopping in the grocery store, or being a part of a community organization, or talking at your church about homelessness in Anoka County. I'm a reformer, a leader, and a servant, and I will listen to you, I will hear you, and I will work for you, because I deserve it, my family deserves it, and you deserve it. I'm Julie Jepson, and I want to be your new Blaine City Council member.
Thank you for your closing statement. Mike, your opportunity for your closing statement.
I touched on a few of the things that I, in my last response, but I just want to reiterate where we are right now. Right now, as we sit here, Blaine is in a situation where we have the lowest tax rate in Anoka County with any developed city. That means fire and police services. We've maintained that through the years. We've also diligently provided the best services that, above average, in Anoka County for our citizens. And I'm a car guy, and what that means is, we're giving them, give everyone Cadillac services with Volkswagen prices, and that's just what we do. We work really hard. The city council that's in place right now is very dedicated, I'm very dedicated, I love the city. And again, it's all about the people to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both for coming in today and sharing your views and opinions with us and the viewers. I appreciate it. And I want to remind you that you can always head to NorthMetroTV.com for complete Local Decision 2016 coverage. It's all there for you, biographies from candidates, more debates and spotlights just like this one that you can watch there, as well as watch on our channel on North Metro TV. We'll be following all those races right up to Election Day, and then we'll have complete coverage on Election Night here on North Metro TV where you can watch it all. For the candidates, Julie Jepson and Mike Burke for Blaine City Council, Ward 2. I've been your moderator, Ben Hale. Thank you for watching.
Thank you.